Meeting order. Nika, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilor Foster, would you lead us in prayer tonight?
Sure. Gracious heavenly Father, we come before you asking for your guidance, asking for your will to be done. We would be sensitive to what the Spirit has to say as we fulfill our duties as servants to the city and to you. In your name we pray. Come in.
Thank you, Larry. All right. Call for all four of us. Councilor Foster.
Rock and roll.
Mayor Pro Tim Segala.
Here.
Councilor Locke.
Here.
Mayor Becker.
Here.
All councilors present, a quorum is declared. Modifications to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, would you have a couple of them under resolutions? You have in front of you Resolution twenty twenty-one dash eleven, which is terminates the local disaster emergency. As you recall, we had a proclamation last year, and this formally tells the state that we're done with that. Also, there's not a city manager report to CD. And I think that those are the only two that stop that.
I would move to approve the modifications to the agenda.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the modifications to the agenda of adding Resolutions twenty dat- twenty twenty-one dash eleven and removing the city manager report. Any discussion? Forrest?
Mayor Pro Tim Segala?
Aye.
Councilor Locke?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Councilor Foster?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, approval of consent agenda. Minutes of regular meeting, June seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. Minutes of special meeting, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Review and approval of accounts payable.
I would move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. For minutes of regular meeting, June seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. Minutes of special meeting, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. And review and approval of accounts payable. Is there any more discussion? Forrest?
Councilor Locke?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Councilor Foster?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Segala?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, proclamations, communications, and appointments. Voting for the vacant council seat.
So, Mr. Mayor, um, if I'm trying to be a council member, if you do it this way, it's a ballot, um, which you all can vote on if you choose to do it that way, which is what the clerk set up. And then we will, um, I'll collect those and show them to the city attorney. And we will declare whatever the result is.
Thank you, sir. It's tied. So, the result of your voting is tied, two to two. Interesting.
Well, it is interesting, and I think the clerk explained to you before that it could be a tie. You can either seek to break the tie tonight, you can do that. Or you can have further deliberations and address it at the next meeting. Or you'll have the choice of not appointing anybody. You took that choice, which you don't have to do tonight, but if you took that choice, you would be on motion in a second, et cetera.
How would we break the tie?
Just...
Do it again?
Vote again, but it probably would be the same.
That probably wouldn't change the...
I would say we probably need to deliberate some more on it. Discuss it some more.
We do have an executive session scheduled for the end. I don't know if we're using it for something else or not.
Well, it was, it's put on there in case we need it. So, if we need it, then we do.
Right, and that particular executive session, if I recall, cannot be utilized to discuss.
That is true.
The appointment to the governing body.
Yeah. So, okay. So...
So, would that have to be another open meeting?
Right, you can discuss it now, you can discuss it at the next meeting. It's really up to you all, how you want to do it. Get arm wrestles.
Looking for answers, what do you guys want to do?
How do we hope for it to be done if it can, if it can be?
How soon can we?
How soon can we deliberate and talk again? We're planning this give one hour. It'll be Tuesday? We have a meeting Tuesday.
We have a, um, meeting Tuesday.
Tuesday evening from six to seven, so it would have to be after seven. Because Wednesday and Thursday, we have interviews.
So, we're going to do an interview, so tack it on in front of one of those. Gives us a time deadline, doesn't it? If you can start early, like five thirty, and get together and have a, we can all zoom in and have a discussion and see whether or not we can come to an agreement or not. I mean, that's, that's a suggestion.
What's our time, seven, eight, and nine?
Six, seven fifteen, eight thirty. It's supposed to be like five thirty.
I know that, that was a squeeze for you.
I'm not sure if that's going to work. We'll do our best to make it work, we can try. It's just a... Yeah, we can do that. Let's do it for Tuesday night. Tuesday, or, I'm sorry, Wednesday.
Wednesday, five thirty.
Okay, so, um, you will need to set a special meeting to have that meeting because you will have a quorum. Um, so Wednesday, uh, seventh, right? Five thirty P M.
Yes, sir.
All right.
And that will be by Zoom. Probably.
Probably, maybe more Zoom, because we have Zoom one, six.
Zoom six.
Can you fire that up by five thirty?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, we need a motion to have a special meeting?
Um, well, actually, a quorum here tonight, and, uh, under the rules, you can announce that, you, the mayor, can announce that you're having a special meeting and you're good to go.
Wednesday, seven, the Wednesday, the seventh, five thirty P M, we'll have a special meeting Zoom. Okay? Thought we were fair enough, for the purpose of...
Discussing candidates for the vacant council seat?
Yeah, discussing candidates for the empty council seat. So, we will discuss that, and then at the... Um, so next meeting?
First will be fifteenth?
Fifteenth? To hopefully be seated on the fifteenth of July. Okay. So, you guys, you're welcome to stay and join us, or whatever you need to do.
Thank you, guys, for showing up. It shows a lot to show up.
So, we will be skipping to the swearing in of the new council member, and then we'll move on to the appointment of the interim city manager. So, we had that discussion last evening, so we need to move to do that. So...
Move to appoint a new city manager?
Yes, the interim.
Yeah, interim.
A motion?
Yeah.
I would, uh, move to appoint, uh, interim city manager, George Dean Felder, to, uh, take over the city manager operations, uh, during the time that Forrest is gone, until we can get somebody else in here.
So, we have a motion and a second.
Oh, second.
Now surprised. We have a motion and a second for the appointment of the interim city manager, uh, Chief George Dean Felder, to, uh, start as of this evening, to work with Forrest and fill in while, until we can get a new city manager put in place. Is there any more discussion? Forrest?
Uh, let's see. Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Councilor Foster?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Segala?
Aye.
Councilor Locke?
Aye.
Okay, that was, uh, all in favor, motion passes. Chief Dean Felder will get to have lots of fun.
Congratulations, George.
Thank you. I'll try not to screw it up.
Thank you very much for, for, uh, taking that on.
Too bad the job no longer has to do it again.
Okay, we're going to go on to citizen comments, special presentations. Scheduled appearances, in order to be included in this portion of the agenda, you have to follow the appropriate paperwork with the city clerk, no later than noon Monday, prior to the meeting. First one will be danger of communication towers. Mariana King. If you'll stand up at the podium, write your name on the paperwork, please, and you will have fifteen minutes.
As I related last month, I'm not an expert on a messenger. And Councilwoman Locke, I appreciate your thanking me for the research that I had done. My presentation today is a follow-up, and in response to a Monovista journal article, what I'd like to do is read my response and then give everybody, uh, a copy, uh, of what I have said. Could you have my glasses? Thank you. Please don't forget to sign in on the sign-in sheet. I'm sorry? I said, please don't forget to sign in on the sign-in sheet.
Okay, it's not up there.
Oh, it's not up there?
Well, that's fine, sorry. Tell me where the actual clerk for that.
He said, "It's what happened to get substituted."
Just can't find good help these days.
No, I think our city manager needs to talk with our board.
It is hard to follow. I think he's just passing by.
Thank you.
The signature right there.
Uh, Ms. Carhart is appearing here with me today, and she's wondering if she's going to have time for citizen comments at the end of the agenda.
There'll be citizen comments right after the special presentations.
Okay. I'm making this follow-up presentation in the spirit of the city of Monovista's vision, which is, quote, "To create opportunity, growth, and a fertile and safe haven for education, recreation, business, and families to thrive," unquote. I'm making this follow-up presentation because the many communication towers in Monovista impact the quality of life and the well-being of people in our community. Americans for Responsible Technology advise, quote, "Local municipalities should be aware that sample ordinances offered by wireless telecommunications companies, their contractors, or the organizations they sponsor, are generally not protective of the rights, welfare, and property of local municipalities, their homeowners, and other residents." Last month, I asked the city council to consider forming a citizens' task force to further research the problems caused by communication towers and what the city can do. The city responded in a Monovista journal article interview citing the nineteen ninety-six Telecommunications Act and how it prohibits local government from limiting cell tower construction on the basis of health hazards. However, there are other issues that the act does, does allow to be addressed. These include the negative impact on wildlife, such as cranes, and also the negative impact on local businesses and on homeowner property values. Municipalities across the country can and are enacting ordinances that limit communication tower company activities and ensure the rights and well-being of the municipalities and its residents. I'm giving you an additional list of resources in addition to the ones I left with you last week. The resources include the Americans for Safe Technology Model Ordinance, the Scenic American Model Cell Tower Ordinance for Cities, Physicians for Safe Technology Model Ordinance twenty nineteen. Also, I gave the city a copy of the book, An Electronic Silent Spring: Facing the Dangers in Creating Safe Limits, by author Katie Singer. Ms. Singer, who lives in Santa Fe, is willing to act on a pro bono basis as a resource to the city of Monovista. I'm including her phone number in this list. I again urge the city council to form a task force and further explore this vitally important issue. Thank you.
Excuse me, ma'am.
Yes?
You'll be for citizen comments, because you're not on the schedule right after this, so it'll be during citizen comments.
Okay.
Ms. King, I have a question for you in regards to this. There was a physics professor debunked concerns about harmful effects of communication towers, and you were scheduled to be at his meeting, and you did not show up. And that was posted in the Valley Courier, June twenty-ninth. So, two days ago.
And you want to know why I didn't show up?
Uh, no, I, he, what you were talking about, he has got it here.
Yeah, my car broke down near Goodspeed, and so I didn't show up, and I had called the commissioners to ask to reschedule. Um, what I, what I, my response to this professor from Fitzpatrick University is he's a physics professor. He, uh, perhaps to some extent is an expert. Uh, his published articles do not reflect that he's an expert on communication tower hazards. And I'm asking the city to look into, for example, the research done by the Physicians for Safe Technology. There's over fifteen hundred physicians, so I would weigh their credibility against a single physics professor.
Okay. Well, that's quite an article, so if anybody's interested, it was in June twenty-ninth.
Yeah, I'm happy that apparently the county commissioner of Alamosa responded seriously to my concern. She and I had some conversations, so I'm happy that the article will appear, and hopefully, uh, the commission will want to let me make a full presentation next time.
And I have one more question for you, Ms. King, and it's not in regards to this of the radio towers. It's in regards to a grant that you had offered to write for the city, and you did not.
Are you trying to discredit my presentation here by something that happened two years ago, in which I gave a full rationale to the city manager? I made a full presentation to the city council, so please don't try to discredit my presentation on the basis of something that happened over two years ago.
I'm not going to totally discredit your...
That's not playing fair. No, that's not playing fair.
Right here in this paper, then, we'll go back to that. Right here, the discredit on a lot of that information, so if you can bring the information, bring all, all of it with you, please.
What information?
You've presented it, good information to us, but you've, also, there's other information that's out there. So, if we're going to do this, we got to do both sides.
That's right. But I don't understand why you wouldn't err on the side of caution in terms of protecting employees who are exposed to, uh, high-frequency radiation, as well as residents of the city. Why are you even objecting to this, Mayor? I don't understand.
I'm not objecting to it, but reading this, based on what you have said, is totally different.
As citizens ask, we should be exploring those questions and those issues.
That's why I was asking.
Yes.
So, thank you very much for your presentation. Monovista chamber update.
Hello. Do you just see my name on this sheet?
Yes, please.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to show you guys a presentation that I did for our chamber board, but first, I'm going to kind of give you updates on what we've done as well. Um, I'm now a notary, so if anybody needs anything notarized, you can come to the chamber. Stampede tickets go on sale in the info center, starting Monday at ten to five, and I believe they'll be there Monday through Friday, up until that first week, or that week of stampede.
Are those tickets for the carnival?
They have carnival, um, concert, rodeo.
All that.
And dance, yeah, they have, they'll have all of them. I, it'll be complicated, but luckily, I'm not on stampede committee, I just get to share an office with you. And, um, then, we have received our, um, funding from Rio Grande Tourism Board. So, we, the chamber in Monovista was allotted around twenty-five thousand dollars available for marketing outside of Rio Grande County. So, if anybody is in need, um, we know we're helping out with, like, the car show. So, if you have anything, marketing-wise, tourism-wise, come and get an application from us. Okay. So, this is my, uh, presentation of, I've been chamber manager since February fifteenth, is that when I started as official chamber manager? And I decided that it was now time to kind of give my vision of what I want to see and how I want the chamber to grow. So... There we go. The, I have two goals that I really want to accomplish of focusing this year, which is creating a relationship with our current members, and then gaining new monthly members, and letting people know what the chamber is. Um, and how I'm going to do that is, for current members, I want to start hosting events that allow them to network with not only me, our board members, but also each other. And then I'm also going to create a better online presence through email and our social medias, um, and just kind of keep in contact with what our members need. Um, and then with new members, I'm going to, again, create an online presence. I kind of really want to push that this year. Um, and then I want to do a door-to-door campaign, um, introducing me as chamber manager, as well as what the chamber has to offer. So, my goals for twenty twenty-one are, I have three things that I'm going to be focusing on for the rest of twenty twenty-one. My first one, which will be, um, July and August, is my door-to-door campaign. I want to go to every single business within Monovista to, even if they're current or non-members, um, to introduce who I am, and just kind of show what we have, showcase what we have. And then I want to start doing an on-the-menu luncheon. Um, that'll, this will be a monthly thing that we open to all of the community, but, um, bring in professionals of all kinds of different things. We can talk about diversity, we can talk about business after COVID, we can talk about really anything, um, and have this open to where everybody and anybody can come. They'll have to pay a small fee to help pay for lunch, but, um, be able to not only showcase what our businesses have, um, to offer, but also, you know, kind of allow growth within our, our community. And then a happy hour networking, which will be, this will be the focus for our members, is a time, um, utilizing different businesses throughout Monovista, uh, to really, all of us get to come together and, um, network with each other and kind of grow again. So, this is my timeline, um, which, again, July and August, so I'm starting tomorrow, is really going to hound me in on, um, doing, uh, my door-to-door campaign, and that's going to be my focus for the first two months. Um, and then, uh, by September, I want to host my first on-the-menu luncheon. Um, by October, I want to host my first happy hour network event, and again, these two events will be monthly. And then I want to host an event, a Thanksgiving event for the community, and then kind of end the year with a bang with our holiday bazaar, which is something that the chamber has done for a while. Um, and then this is what I ask of my board, which, I mean, you guys as well, can be it, but, um, as I was researching on what, like, means to be chamber, or why you should, um, be a member of your local chamber, this, uh, quote came up, which is a local chamber of commerce organization, has a reputation for standing up for the local community and its economy, and I really want that to be kind of my branding of the chamber, of Monovista chamber, is I really want us to be, have that reputation of standing up for our businesses, standing up for our economy, and really just kind of helping us grow. And then, um, what I ask from my board of directors, and what I'll ask from all of you, is, um, your opinion on anything and everything, whether I'm going to like it or not, I really need your opinion. I'm new, and I'm growing, and I'm learning, and, um, so, of course. And then, uh, your support is really the one that I need from the city of Monovista. It's just you guys coming to the events, you guys, you know, just kind of helping get the word out, that's really what it is. All right? Oh, yeah, that's my last slide. Any questions? I kind of rambled and went quickly.
All right. Told us you're not good in front of people, but you did a good job, great presentation.
Thank you very much. It's like you're making a lot of great changes, and you move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Okay, citizen comments. City council, often your own scheduled comments, please enter comments to three minutes. Council will not take action at the same meeting. And the same thing, be sure to put your name on it, please. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Denise Carhart. I've been in Monovista about two months. I love this community, it's beautiful, pleasant. Um, I came on board with Mary Ann after reading the article in the paper. This is something that has been close to my heart since I discovered, um, the consequences of EMF exposure. It's, um, not as safe as they would like us to believe. And, um, I have a paper with four heavyweights that can explain the issues. It's very technical, and, um, along with the benefits, there are drawbacks. So, um, I have this paper, four copies, if anyone would like it. My real concern is the Wi-Fi in schools, because these are microwave emissions, it's irritating our children. I have four grandchildren in the Moffett School District, and I would greatly appreciate some investigation and seeing what we can do to cut down on the emissions. But the four heavyweights I have listed on the paper are Barry Triller, he's, was a United Kingdom Microwave Weapon Specialist that the United States government hired for microwave weapons. And then there's Professor Curtis Bennett out of Canada. He was the government Reta Electrical Specialist that oversees all the electrical domains for their approval. And he says Wi-Fi should not be in schools, and smart meters, they don't save any electricity. The EMF emissions violate every atom and molecule that they come into contact with. Also, EMF emissions violate Building Code Six. The third person I have is Deborah Tavarez with StopTheCrime.net. And the fourth person, the Fullerton Informer, he's a family man with children in school. He's in Fullerton, California. He's in Fullerton, California. He's been trying to get wireless out of schools there. He sees the dangers, but he has like four different sites. So if anyone is interested in any of this information, it's here. It's valuable. It's our health, our children's health, and every living thing.
Thank you. Anybody else for citizen comments?
Do I have permission to give you a handout today with some pictures on it?
Yes, sir.
This is in reference to the, uh, I don't know why you didn't read this, the fence ordinance tonight? In the paper, it said that was gonna be addressed tonight.
I know, I got moved to the fifteenth.
Okay, good. I'd like to give one to the chief to, this is a safety issue. And I'll address these pictures here in a second. I guess, you know, safety is obviously a big concern for all of us. We want safe citizens. We want safe visitors. And when I was reading about this ordinance, you know, the thing, for me, if you look at the very front cover of the paper, that's, that's my residence. To my understanding, my fence was built twelve years ago. Also, the back wall, the eight-foot brick wall, which would probably last longer in this city. In fact, it was constructed by a former city council member, Rose Wilson. When I bought this property, I didn't expect to be, you know, maybe hit with a, could be several thousand dollars, number one, to remove that brick wall on the back alley. Uh, because that thing is steel-reinforced. It's gonna take a, probably a wrecking ball to get that thing down. Also, you see the, on that front cover, my fence, which adjoins my neighbor to the south, exceeds that so-called four-foot height that I think you're talking about. Plus, that would have to be set back. I got concerns again for every citizen that has fences like that and the cost we're gonna incur. On top of that, if you look at the pictures there, I will kind of go over them real quick. If you go to page number two, we not only need to be concerned about residences, but the businesses. The second page, that's the Strowmeyer's Funeral Home. That alley there between Second and, what street is that there? Batterson. There are citizens that park in that alley behind their houses. That's where their driveways are at. When they enter or leave that, that alleyway and head north onto Second Avenue, the Strowmeyer Funeral Home impedes their visibility to see to the right. So I mean, that's, again, we gotta address all these issues. The fence, that, that second picture is a fence directly across from the back of Strowmeyer's, which you see in the first picture. Page number three, that's Don Tomas Bakery. I think that one-way sign was put up not too long ago, if I remember. I think I was attending a city council meeting. They are exiting onto one sixty. You cannot see either way onto the sidewalk when you're exiting that alley there. So that, and the only way you could fix that is either close that alley or move those buildings, and I guarantee you, those buildings are not gonna be moved, nor is Strowmeyer's Funeral Home. So those are, those are huge issues. You go to page number four, that's the alley adjacent to the Finer Blessings Thrift Boutique. Again, people coming out of there can't see left or right. Page number five, if you look at that one, Sunflower Bank, I'm a member there. You see those little windows there, but before you, when you're exiting that drive-thru, you cannot, the front of your vehicle is out of that before you hit those windows, the front of your vehicle's already on the sidewalk. Too late to do anything about it then. If there's, if there's a citizen or pedestrian walking that sidewalk, you're gonna hit him, because you cannot see him with those little windows there. This one, page number six, I know you have ordinance on the book. I think it's, uh, chapter nine or something, and one of the ordinance talked about sidewalks and, you know, impediments from trees and bushes. This is the corner of First and Morris. Again, these are just sample shots of things that, we wanna throw a fence ordinance at the residences. It's gonna cost us thousands. I, I don't know if anybody's ever been hurt, chief. I don't know if you know if anybody's ever been injured or killed from somebody backing out of their driveway or somebody exiting a business or exiting an alley, because I think most citizens are responsible drivers. I back up extremely slow. Not because I got a fence there, because I am concerned about anybody, I don't care. The article in the paper talked about a four-year-old. Well, and I think there was a comment made, we got four-year-olds walking our streets by themselves. We got more of a, more of a problem with fence ordinances, I guarantee you. We got a huge problem here. If they're unsupervised, and then also I believe there's an ordinance that allows no, no bicycles on the sidewalks. Broadway Street, kids leaving school, up and down. I get people bicycling all the time right in front of our house. How are we gonna enforce that? That's more of a concern than, than a fence ordinance. Uh, page number seven, that's the alley, that's in between the three-sixty insurance and the parking lot of Dairy Queen. Anybody coming onto one sixty cannot see to the left. Again, the only way to solve that, you'd have to move that building or close the alleys down. What you're gonna do is if you close these alleys, you're gonna impede a lot of businesses, I guarantee you. Don Tomas would have to close his drive-through down because there's no way you can safely exit that alley and see to the left or right if there are pedestrians on those sidewalks. Those are more of a hazard than my little piece of property there, but again, I'm not discounting safety. But the visibility downtown is terrible coming out of any alley. And finally, let me just throw this at you. The sidewalks are more of a, I think they're just as much of a hazard in this town. And I, I appreciate the fact that we have a program going on. In fact, I applied for it, the concrete replacement program. I've seen contractors out there measuring my sidewalk. I, I am willing to share that cost with, with the city, and I appreciate that you would share it, because my sidewalk is a trip hazard. And I know that sidewalk was damaged long before I bought that house. It probably, in fact, if you look at the page number eight, the sidewalk there, that's by the bowling alley. That is a hazard right there. The bowling alley would have to invest thousands of dollars to have that sidewalk repaired, and that's only one example of, walk this city. I think most of you know, the sidewalks are gonna take years to replace in this city, years. And I, here's what I'll finally say. I mean, we, I, I attended the city council meeting where Element Engineering gave the presentation. We got, we have some serious infrastructure issues in this town that need to be addressed. It would make that fence issue look like nothing, hence the wastewater treatment plants, which were addressed by Element Engineering. To my understanding, the city is out, you know, out of code or soon to be fined. I don't know if that's been addressed. I haven't been here in, in a long time, so. We can throw ordinances at all the citizens you want. Sidewalk, trees, fences, but it's gonna cost the citizens and the businesses. We're gonna lose business if you close those alleys. If you close the, the drive-through for the bank, because you can't see either way. It's interesting, if you drive through, they got a stop sign up there saying, "Look both ways for pedestrians." Well, you can't look both ways until you pull out. The front end of your vehicle's already exited that even with those windows, you cannot see.
Mr. Mayor, that's fine. Yeah, your time's up, so we'll have the fence ordinance on the fifteenth.
Okay.
So do you wanna come back then?
Oh, I, I sure will, but please consider this, that the effect you're gonna have not only on businesses, because it's not a fence ordinance, it's a safety issue. It's gonna affect businesses if you treat everybody correctly, the same way. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just one comment on that, Mr. Mayor. As the ordinance is currently drawn, it is not retroactive. As the, as it's currently drawn up, it's not retroactive.
See, I, yeah, the paper, I read the paper, it did not say that, so I wasn't sure, but, so everybody's grandfathered, is what you're saying?
In the ordinance that they're contemplating, yes, there is some retroactive action.
But if I could still say, the businesses though, there's still obviously a safety issue. Either way, whether it's retroactive or not, you know, when we brought up, when I read about the fence ordinance in the paper, and I could only go by what they said, it's still a definite issue, not only for residences, but our downtown, because those alleys are used a lot. Again, I think Don Tomas probably depended on that, especially during the COVID. And again, the only way you could resolve that would be either close the alley or he's gonna have to move his building back, and I know that's not gonna happen, so thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. I'm back. Uh, I have to say something that really impressed me totally. I am so proud of our city council for honing up to the mistake with the, uh, the floor issue and the one-sent committee, that whole debacle, that you had the courage and the strength of character to apologize. That really moved me. That I, I find you guys amazing, so thank you. Uh, it takes a big person to hone up to a mistake. I mean, huh, been there. It, it takes courage, and I wanna thank you all for what you've said. It meant a lot to the people on the committee, so thank you.
Thank you, Margot. Any other citizen comments? Bob? Be sure to sign that paper up there.
Yep.
Another guy that wants my autograph.
All day long. My name is Bob Richards, and I am the, uh, general manager, hopefully soon-to-be owner of KSOV, KYDN, and KBGV, which is the new sports station. I'm here for three reasons. The first was because I had seen that, um, Mariana King was, uh, gonna come and tell you of the danger of communication towers. That obviously is my livelihood. And I have a, a lot of concern about what she said, but after hearing her, I would strongly suggest that you form a committee, because I'm not concerned at all about what the committee would find. And I would also say that, um, Mariana King has come to me on several occasions to be interviewed for books that she's written without regard to the microwave transmission that it takes to get the audio to the big radio tower that we have on Highway two eighty-five. Um, so when it, it seems like when it serves her purpose, it's all fine, but otherwise, they're horrible. So a, as a member of the community who owns, soon to own, these microwave transmissions and radio towers, I would encourage you to have that hearing to put it to rest for everybody, because I don't think there's anything there. That's the first thing.
It's called Kill the Messenger. That's what Caesar did, when he didn't like news on the battlefield.
I didn't interrupt, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Um, the second thing I'm here for is, I'm sure I'm doing something wrong, but I'm having trouble getting on an agenda. So how do I do that?
You contact the city clerk before Monday. Monday before, the meeting's like on the fifteenth. You'd contact her on the twelfth. Or you could actually contact her after this meeting.
Yeah.
Oh, I was saying tomorrow.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's contact her and tell her what you'd like to do, and then she can get you on the agenda.
I thought I did that. Maybe I did something wrong. But I'll try that again. The reason I wanna be on the agenda is because I'd like for you all to consider to allow us to use our microwaves and radio towers to broadcast these meetings live. Uh, I think it would be a great community service. I'm not trying to get, I'm not trying to get sideways with anybody. I'm sure that there's people who are sitting here that might not think that's a great idea, and if, if that's the sentiment, I'm not gonna make a big deal out of it. But I am simply here to offer the services of the radio station to make these meetings a little more accessible to people who can't make it, to all of them. I know that we record them, and I know people can see them, but I also think there's an element of people who would enjoy listening to these things live. And the third reason I'm here is probably the biggest reason, and that is, I'm trying to, I'm trying to, um, hold a large event, um, that I'd like to have in the new event center. I don't wanna take it to Alamosa. It could possibly attract as much as three thousand people. And I can't get any answers. I can't get any answers on when it's gonna be available, what it costs to rent, what kind of insurance I need. Uh, I can't get any answers on whether or not I can bring in vending. I can't get any answers on any of that, so.
Talking about the Scotty Center.
Yes, and I also believe the radio stations have great synergies with that center. And so, once I get those answers, my plan was to come to city council and make a formal presentation. But without those answers, I can't create the presentation. So my question to you is, where are we with an event manager, and when will that venue be ready to be rented by the public?
The venue will probably, and you can answer this for us.
Depends on, sorry, the, uh, like, that works well. Sorry, there we go. Well, it depends on what your time of your event is. I mean, we have a construction schedule. Um, the conference center probably is not done until October.
Well, my understanding though, is that the event center is gonna be used for stampede.
It's gonna have a temporary certificate of occupancy, so it's not fully operational.
Okay.
But we did that to hold stampede. I mean, what kind of date are you working for?
October.
So potentially.
Potentially, but it takes months to plan something that big, and I can't work on potentially. I, and I need the answers to those other questions that I posed. So, so the real question is, where are we on an event manager for that facility?
So we're working on that. We're working on the pricing, which won't be a lot different than what we currently have. So we're working on that, but, um, you know, the actual opening date is still a little bit in question.
Okay. Uh, will, uh, the, the temporary city manager have those answers in a week?
Probably not.
Probably not.
Not in a week.
It'll be.
Are we gonna hire an event manager for that?
Yes, we are.
And, and do we have a timetable for that?
Probably around the middle of August.
Have we advertised for it?
We haven't put the job out yet.
Have not. Is there a reason for that?
Well, we don't have a facility at the moment.
Oh, come on, seriously?
Yes, seriously.
Well, the three minutes is already over. I have to go to the next.
That's a, that's a horrible answer, frankly. It really is. You know what kind of facility you're gonna have. You know what's gonna be put in there. That's a bad answer.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
You're losing money every minute you wait not putting this, um, an event manager in place, because now you're forcing me to go to Alamosa with this event. And it's gonna be an annual event, and I'm not the only one.
Go to resolutions. Uh, well, one more. Is there any more citizen comments? Yes, yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to introduce myself. I'm Maria McCollum, and I'm gonna be the new reporter for here in Montevista. So I just wanted to say hi to everybody and just let you know that's why I'm here.
You're, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I'm gonna be the new reporter for Montevista, so I just wanted to introduce myself and say hi to everybody.
Okay.
Thank you, Maria McCollum.
Nice to have you.
Uh, did you sign your name on that?
I did.
Yes, you did. She was doing that when she was talking. She's multitasking.
Hello, I'm Vezinda Velarde Archuleta, and I came one time because I wanted to open a homeless shelter. And now I have a better idea on the west side. I want to open a R and B. So I would like you to really think about that, because I'm gonna make it happen. I'm a troublemaker. Look at the chief of police whispering to the other gentleman.
An R and B?
An R and B.
What does that stand for?
What is that?
None of you know what an R and B is, really. Somebody raised your hand. It is a place, I use my home as a rental, sort of like a hotel, or sort of like, uh,
Like a B and B?
An Airbnb?
Airbnb?
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so that, instead of the homeless shelter where everybody's taking advantage of me, because that's what they do, I want to open a what?
Airbnb.
Yes, so I need you guys to get your heads together, because I wanna apply for the city council seat that my pastor Gary Johnson left. So hello, I'm gonna fill out a petition, and I wanna be on the board, and I heard that councilman, um, Victor Sagala is probably the best person sitting there beside you, you beautiful lady, and as far as Becker, he won't be the, what is he, city? And as far as Becker, he won't be the, what is he, city? Mayor Becker is the mayor. Okay, he's not gonna be the mayor next term, guaranteed, because I pray for everything. Have a good evening. God bless you all. And chief of police, thank you for being such a good chief. Congratulations that you were awarded here. Linda Berna, thank you for everything you do for the community, Linda Berna. Have a good day.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and move to resolutions. What's that?
Good evening, Mayor, Council of Evers. In front of you, you have Resolution 2021-11. Resolution terminating the proclamation declaring a local disaster emergency in and for the city of Montavista, Colorado. Pretty straightforward. We had a proclamation that declared that, and apparently, we have to tell the state, Colorado Office of Emergency Management, that, you know, we're not having an emergency anymore. That's all this does. Passed resolution, we send a copy of it to them, and I guess it makes them happy.
So then, if, if things happen in the future where, like, they start lockdown, we'll have to do another resolution too?
Well, you could actually, at that point, you know, proclamation works for that in Colorado law, so that's why we did that. But, you know, resolution kind of is better for closure, kind of. You could do another proclamation, but that's a little awkward. So, yes, if things went south, so to speak, or wherever with COVID, yeah, you would need to declare another emergency.
Excellent. Sorry.
So, good.
I would, I would move to approve Resolution 2021-11, the resolution terminating the proclamation declaring a local disaster emergency in and for the city of Montavista, Colorado.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2021-11. Resolution terminating the proclamation declaring a local disaster emergency in and for the city of Montavista, Colorado. Is there any more discussion?
Counselor Foster.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Well, I was expecting you to go over there. You're supposed to run.
Mayor Protem Segala?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Okay. Everyone voted yes. The motion carries, and the mayor has signed the resolution, and we'll send it off to our friends of the state.
Staff. What's that? Chamber.
I said, I was asking if you're sure you don't want to stay up there, because the chamber lease is there.
Yeah, the chamber lease is there.
Right. Yeah, should have just stayed up there. So... So, in front of you this evening, you have modified chamber lease based upon your discussions at the last meeting.
So, it's up to you all to decide if you want to approve the mayor assigning the lease this evening.
Motion to approve the lease with the Chamber of Commerce, as it is written. Seconded. It's been moved and seconded to approve the chamber lease, as it is written. Any more discussion?
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segala?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
There we go. All ayes. Motion carries. The mayor will sign the lease, and...
I think we're folks here, they can sign it too.
Thank you, Mayor, for that hardy do for the community.
Okay, we'll go to staff proposals, reports, and actions. Kids Connection.
All right. Good evening. I really don't have much for you guys. We've just been running around acting like children for a month, so... We're still sitting consistent with the sixty-eight each day. I actually moved eight kids into programming and was able to move up our waitlist, because we've had some kids that, I guess, parents have found other care, or they just determined they didn't need us for the summer, so we're able to keep our waitlists moving along. We're hoping when we come back on the twelfth, that we will be able to move more kids and actually open up the third room, so we can bring in an additional twenty, that will wipe out our waitlist completely. We are waiting to get through June, because I have two staff members that were completing college classes for the summer. Those ended today, so fingers crossed that they did well and don't have to repeat those credits this next semester. And so then we will be fully staffed all day, every day, for the remainder of the summer. This coming week, so let me think where I'm at. Next week, we are actually closed. We decided to do a midsummer break for staff. With the amazing year that 2020 was, we, June twenty-second, running an entire year of ten full, ten-hour days, four days a week with children all day long, so we decided to break up the summer a little bit, give staff some time, mainly myself and Jesse, some time to just get out and enjoy what there is for the summer. We're not used to having a summer, because we run full through the summer every year, so this will be the first time we've actually closed and are taking a little bit of us time for the summer, so that will be really nice. I don't know if my kids are gonna enjoy me being home, but...
It's an honor.
Yeah, yes, looking forward to it. I'm just looking forward to alarm clock not going off, to be honest, and maybe one day actually sleeping in past when the sun comes up. That would be amazing. Instead of watching it come up every morning and thinking, what is gonna happen today? Or what fun stories or challenges are there today? Really, that's, that's all we've had going on. I did take a load of cardboard boxes, because I try to recycle as much of our waste as possible with Kids Connection, so I don't throw boxes away. We break them down, and they sit in the back space until I can load them up. It took me forty-five minutes to load up boxes in my blazer today, so I was like, that kind of stayed for way too long. I've also started keeping the, well, I didn't start. I kept all of the milk jugs for the summer, because I figured they would make really cool fairy houses for our project. And when I went into our dry storage, I realized that we have way more plastic jugs than anticipated. And in counting, we have served, like, over seventy gallons of milk in the five weeks we've been open for the summer. So, it's just a nice little representation of how much food and drinks that we go through, mainly milk. The water is never ending, but a lot of milk for the summer. So, that's all I got for you.
Do any of you guys need milk jugs?
Yeah, I have. Yep, I have full gallon milk jug, and I have right now a hundred and forty of the little individual eight-ounce cartons. By the end of, well, by the thirteenth, because we come back on the twelfth, by the thirteenth, I'll have an additional hundred and forty. So, I'll have two hundred and eighty little eight-ounce milk cartons. We're gonna do a planning project with them, so we will reuse them. And if not, then they'll go to Alamosa for recycling, so they don't end up in the trash pile.
Very good. I know you guys been busy, because I seen you guys strung down a block and a half of kids. They're like...
Yeah, it gets a little wild, but it's fun.
Yeah, I was continuing to be impressed with what y'all doing. You're doing a good job.
Thank you. We enjoy it. Our kids this year are a lot of fun. They have some stories to tell. And the conversations that you can hold with them are endless. You just have to not be so serious. And it's fun. Those conversations will take you places you've never imagined. Thank you.
Thank you, Nika.
Recreation.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I know I wasn't here for the last minute for to keep a report, so I thought I had made it today. Sorry that I don't have a reading report, but I will have, I'm here, and I will try to just kinda fill you in with what we, what is going on with the recreations department. Well, since we reopened after COVID, we started with the youth baseball, and we're actually in the last week of our league. And then next week, we're gonna start with what we call our end-of-season tournaments. We start with the pigtail games, and then Monday, the twelfth, we'll have our finals here in Montavista for the teams that participated, or the towns that participated, which was Delmore Center and Montavista. That were the only three towns that participated. And this year, we were happy to be able to hire two seasonal employees to help us with the fields. That kind of helped me and Kim to get some time to focus on other things and other programs to get them going. Excuse me. And they've been doing a very good job. There, there's no go-hits in our fields this, this year at all. They've been working on it. They've been, you know, irrigating it, they're cutting grass, painting, getting the, what we call the vault tower, clean, painting. You know, the restrooms are open every day. When we have games, they're clean, they smell good. So, they've been doing an excellent job, and I wish that we can continue to have this in the summer, because it does help a lot. In addition to that, we also, we've been having, since last week, we've been having five to seven youths coming to volunteer to help with any work at the, in our facilities. And these, these kids come from the, what they call the Youth Works, and it's a faith-based service organization that coordinates volunteer opportunities for teenagers throughout the San Luis Valley. I actually got that email from Bob. It was forwarded to me, and I contacted, I contacted the program immediately, and we were able to get some kids come up. And they're also gonna help us with, because we were kinda debating what we're gonna do with the Stampede, being that we shorthanded. Can kind of get ready for Stampede with the rodeos, since we were the ones, we've been usually cleaning up and getting everything ready for that. So, they're gonna be, starting next week, they're gonna be around the rodeos kinda weed eating and picking up trash and all that stuff, kind of getting things ready for that. So, with, with our two seasonals and those five to seven kids coming, we've been getting a lot of things done. And actually, our facilities are looking better than I have seen them in a couple of years, so I'm very glad for that. Let's see, rentals for the parks here at the, especially Chumon Park, has been busy. A lot of people has been calling. We've been getting a lot of rentals, a lot of reservations for the Casibo. And as far as for the Sky High, we are getting calls for reservations for next year. So, what we've been doing is we've been taking and scheduling those, those events for next year with the understanding that we will revisit in November or December and see where we are with the facility and with the change of amounts, the rentals and all that. And then they can just have enough time to decide whether they're gonna continue or look for a different place. And most of, most of these rentals are just spending for next year. Nothing for this year, because we don't know exactly where we are with the facility. So, I, people that call, that's, that's what I told them. And things to come in our department for the youth programs. We actually, today, we started, we opened registrations for football and volleyball, and this is for grades. Volleyball is for third and fourth and fifth and sixth grade, and then football, we got flag football for first and second, and then tackle football, third and fourth and fifth and sixth grade. And the whole month of July will be registration time, kind of getting ready for that sport. And actually, and also coming out of baseball and collecting all the equipment and uniforms and doing inventory, and then handing out football equipment and uniforms and all that, and then we'll start with games in mid-August. And that will go through September, October. We also have a speed and agility camp for third through eighth grade, and that will be July sixth through the fifteenth. It'll be in the evenings, and that will be host, that will be at the middle school. And we also have a fourteen, we're planning a fourteen U and a twelve U baseball tournament, July thirty and thirty-first. We're hoping to get at least eight teams of each division. And if we do, that's gonna be a big event. A lot of people will come in out of town, into town. And that means, you know, filling in our hotels, restaurants, and all that stuff, so we're pushing hard to get that event going. We also will have a youth basketball camp for third grade through eighth grade, and that'll be August third through the fifth. Also, for this event, usually, we have a lot of out-of-town people coming too, from New Mexico, from Utah. I think the last time it was from Idaho, the last time we hosted this event. So, that's another big opportunity for our town to, you know, bring some people into our community. And as far as adult programs, we are gonna give it a shot one more time to get softball going in Montavista again. The difference that I'm gonna do this year is just gonna move it a little bit earlier. Instead of starting in November, we're just gonna, we're gonna try to start in August. We're gonna go the whole month of August, whole month, whole month of November, and then probably have our end-of-season tournaments first weekend of October. That's when it kind of starts getting a little more chilly outside, so... But around this time, we usually host the Rocky Skill Challenge for their kids, but I think due to COVID, we contacted them, we asked them if they were gonna host that. We never heard nothing from them. We never got an email from them, so we kind of assumed that they were not doing that, so we didn't promote that in our town that year. The Denver Nuggets Skill will be next, and will be the beginning of next year. And so, we are already starting in contact with the association to see if we're gonna be able to host that in our town. And if we do, we're gonna probably schedule for sometime, sometime in January. And again, we're just kind of waiting to see where the facility will be, because even with volleyball right now, we're gonna have to put a limit to how many kids we can register. We do not want to get more than two teams for each level, because then we run into trouble with scheduling practices and games. And the, the school also has volleyball at the same time, and they have to practice, and we don't have time to get in there. So, with two teams, we can manage to allow the school to get us in there at least once or twice a week, and they have games in the weekends, probably. But we're gonna limit that to probably sixteen kids per division, which is eight kids per team. And it's kind of, kind of, be kind of like the first come, first served kind of thing. We hate to do that, but until we have our facility, that's what we gotta do. I think that's all I have for my report for this time. If you guys have any questions for me or concerns that you wanna address.
Thanks for what you do, honey.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Council Committee, City Commission, and Council reports.
I just, I would like to thank everybody for showing up tonight and speaking their minds and showing up for the council seat, even though it ended up in a tie. I appreciate everything that you guys are doing, the citizens of Montavista, Nika. You don't even realize what you're doing for the future of our town. Sometimes those kids don't have anywhere else to go, you know, and if they can't go to Kids Connection, they're gonna find something to do, you know, and so... You know, it's unspeakable, honestly, so... you know, it's unspeakable, honestly, so, um. There's just a lot of things going on, um, we do need to take into consideration, I think, a lot of what's been said, and, uh, see what we can do, so, move forward, Montevista.
Martha?
Um, I do, I also wanna thank everybody for being here, it's, um, much more gratifying to me when I sit up here and I see people in the seats. So, thank you so much for coming, and invite others, we do need your input. We may not always see eye to eye on everything, but we can't work things out if we don't talk about them. Also, I wanted, uh, I wanted to clarify something that I said in my council report last meeting. Uh, I didn't realize it was misunderstood until, uh, I was contacted by someone after the meeting. I apologize to the One Set Committee for the poor communication. I do believe that we can do our communication better. It was clarified that it was not illegal. Um, it was clarified that we did what we had to do, however, we should have been much more transparent and much more communicative with our One Set Committee. And so, I hope that we can improve on that in our quarterly meetings with them. Maybe we can, as, as things settle with the change of hands that's going on right now, maybe we can even get a monthly newsletter out. Uh, that might help communication go a little bit more smoothly. Uh, other than that, I am very happy the weather's turning warm again. I am loving going around, I do walk, um, some of the streets in Montevista, not a lot, obviously. Um, but, um, I'm loving seeing the people walking their dogs and riding their bikes, maybe not in the right place all the time, but it's still like seeing them out there. Um, being good to their neighbors, I've, I've been, I've seen neighbors helping each other with their yards. Um, and, and just, just little things like that, you know, hey, you need some help with your weeds, I'm pulling my, I've got my weed around, I actually saw this, I had two witnesses, and somebody had their weed eater going, and asked their neighbor, you just come on over there and walk around your yard too. And it took the gentleman about twenty minutes, and he was done, and that's, that's how we build community. It is one person to person, meeting to meeting, letter to letter, and keeping the communication going. So, I encourage you all to please come to our meetings, encourage your friends, encourage your family. Just come. I came, I came to meetings for a year and a half or so before I ever even thought about asking for a seat on council, because I wanted to learn my town. I wanted to learn where we live, I wanted to learn where I've moved to. And so, if for no other reason, come, and as tonight has shown, sometimes it can be a little entertaining. That's all for that.
Counselor Foster?
I'll probably be the odd man out today. One of the things that, uh, I see that is occurring, that I've seen over the last year and a half, is that we do not apply our own rules in a uniform fashion. Uh, case in point, we had a, um, car repair place that did file its special review across from Love's, I think they call it the old co-op building. Um, they moved, another car place moved in, they never filed the S R U. Car place that moved out, is now on Turner Block Adams Street, if I'm correct, that's not even permitted purpose. I'm not criticizing them, I'm not saying we should shut them down. I'm saying that we need to be uniform in how we apply the rules, and if we don't think the rules should apply, then we as council need to change them.
Thanks, sir. Uh, I'll reiterate, thanks, Eric, thank you everybody for being here, it's, uh, good to see so many new faces. And see so many faces here, it's been a while. And, uh, thank you for all council votes, and, uh, I'll go with Monty Strong. Thank you, everybody. We will adjourn this meeting until July fifteenth.